All right, it's six o'clock. We will call the board trustees to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherri, can I roll call, please?
Sparks?
Here.
Sagami?
Here.
Ermeling?
Here.
Ziegler?
Here.
Maloney, absent, excused. Jean?
Here.
Feeny?
Here.
Okay, public comments. I think we have one slip. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make any public comments? I see we have a Boy Scout in the audience. Cubs Scout, Boy Scout?
Boy Scout.
Okay. Are you here for a merit badge?
Yep.
Okay. Which one?
Citizenship of the year.
All right. Well, if you have any questions as we go along, you know, just kind of give me one of these and we'll try to fill you in on what we're going to talk about, all right? But that's good. I'm glad you're here.
My name's Sarah. I'm with Actored Acrayzal. We submitted a proposal for your assessor contract. I know some of the items on the agenda, just in case you have any questions.
I'm sorry. You're really soft. A little louder.
My name's Sarah. I'm with Actored Acrayzal. One of the items on the agenda was the assessor contract.
Okay.
If you have any questions about the proposal, I'd be delighted to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anybody else have any public comments? Brian, did you want to talk now or did you want to? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Bushnell. I live at 3700 Montague Avenue, Weston. My comment is about the ordinance rezoning in the Callan Avenue area. And I know, and it's not about the rezone. I know that I should have been at the public hearing. My comment is about the suggestion from staff to reduce vegetation on the curb. If there's a map, whoever controls the IT stuff, if there's a map of that curb where Hunt Street and Callan Avenue makes the curb, and there are two trails, the State Mountain Bay Trail and the Weston Pave Trail, they are very tight there. And the staff suggestion, there, it's okay. The staff suggestion is to reduce vegetation around that curve area. And as far as I'm concerned, and I bike those trails a lot in decent weather, like three to four times a week, and so I'm out there a lot. The problem is not the vegetation. The problem is the speed of the westbound vehicles coming around that curve into that intersection. Because there's just no room between the trails and that curve. Those vehicles are on you, just bam. Cutting the vegetation back will just encourage and enable the speeders to go faster because they'll have a clearer vision of that turn. That's a, I don't understand a 35 mile an hour speed limit on that residential street at all, but particularly on that curb. So, that's my comment. As far as I'm concerned, there are other things that could be done to make that a safer, things like rumble strips to try to slow down people. I would prefer speed bumps to get them to actually slow down, but then they'd probably just drive out on their shoulder and go around them anyway, although that might slow them down even more. So, those are my comments. It's not about the rezone. It's about the safety issue on that curb. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Can I just, a question. That curb, they won't be going 35 miles an hour. It's too much of a curb.
Michael, is the vision triangle clear in there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I guess that was the concern is for, so where Nate has the mouse there, just put right at the intersection. So, for a car that's trying to turn left into that, onto Callan, that was the, I think, concern is that as cars come around there, they can't see that westbound traffic, so as they make that left-hand turn, it's, I guess, deemed dangerous by the residents in that area. So, I...
And the speed limit is 35 miles?
The speed limit's 35 on Callan.
And the residential area? Maybe we should decrease the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. And that, the vision triangle, I think that's a safety issue, and it should be clear.
Okay. This is not an agenda item, so we could put it on the future agenda to have this discussion, whether it's speed, vegetation, or structure of the intersection. But this is just a public comment. We can't really make any decisions on it right now. Okay, presentations. We have not minutes from previous board meeting, September 9th, 2019. Board trustees. Motion by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Item number six, written correspondence. I did receive a letter today in regards to a property that I had turned over to Jen, and apparently it's already being addressed. Item number seven, reports from boards, committees, and commissions. We have reports under Plan Commission number 14 and Public Works number 15 looking for a motion to acknowledge. Motion to acknowledge. Motion by Jean, second by Feeny. On the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approved. Sorry, Jean, I got to remember, get that, little delay in there.
Yeah, don't worry.
Number 19, reports from administrator. Keith?
I guess the only thing was to give you some update. I did share some information for Friday. Ellers has done some review of the pro forma that was provided by FDG, Server Development Group, on the phase one of the project. So, there was this list of questions that they sent back to FDG, and also certainly related to any kind of development agreement we would be negotiating in the near, hopefully the near future. I guess the main news was that, of course, the individual permit application that was repackaged for a phased approach to the project was not deemed complete yet by the DNR, so we're working on getting that, getting the questions addressed on that. It's probably going to be a meeting with Keith Patrick from the DNR next week. He's not available this weekend, longer than it sounds, so just trying to make sure we are addressing everything as best we can. So, I guess, aside from that, I guess nothing more to report. I think we're getting to some level of frustration. I know that members of the CDA, we haven't been able, you know, to get in front of them with anything of any substance for the last couple of months, so we haven't had a meeting. But I think we're approaching the time we should be having some things to discuss, not only with TIF 1, but also some things with TIF 2. So, I guess aside from that, we're kind of focused on budget, getting ready for next week's budget workshop.
Okay, any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Questions for Keith?
Yes.
Is about a month, month and a half, he's making cost estimate and he's not done with it yet?
As far as?
As he was making cost estimate for the roads and everything else in there?
You're talking about?
And I'm talking about Jason. Justin, I don't know where his name is.
Justin?
I guess it's...
The last two, three reports, I think you're right, he said he's working on it, and how long it's going to take?
Reporting back, the answer that I get, I'm not so sure that it's, until we get some movement on the permit, that it's an urgent issue, but we are, that's exactly the question that was forwarded through Ellers now, too. So, I'll be talking to Justin tomorrow, he wasn't in today.
I think he's taking too much time making estimates. It's that long, really. You should wrap it up and give it to Ellers, so he can do his job. He's holding everybody back.
Right.
That's my comment.
Yeah, I don't know, it's a, I think we get some movement on the permit, I think it's kind of a moot point.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Keith?
Are we going to have enough time? I mean, I'm starting to really get nervous with timeframe, I mean, for paying this off when we, if and when we actually get some approval. And if we don't know the numbers and what they're going to put in, I, I mean, I'm not going to agree to anything that's not going to pay for itself.
I agree. But we have to get the information before we can get there.
Yeah. That's why I've been waiting, seems like forever.
Okay, any other questions? Keith?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Clerks, Sherri, do you have anything to add to your report?
I don't, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Sherri?
Just, I think that you and I talked a couple times about the social media policy. How's that coming?
Heather just got back last week. So, we have not had a chance to sit down, and she's right now just really busy on the newsletter.
Oh, absolutely.
So, maybe once we get that newsletter out, we can sit down and get back at that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, number 22, fire EMS. Josh, you have anything?
The only thing I would mention is on October 4th, we'll be burning a house on Schofield Avenue, just down from Wiggly Field. We'll probably start right around eight in the morning, and hopefully it should be wrapped up around two, but there will probably be some smoldering debris there for at least 24 to 48 hours.
Okay, questions for Josh? All right, thanks, Josh. 23, park segregation. Do you have anything to add to your report, Sean?
I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
Any questions? All right. Number 24, plan development. Jen?
The only thing I wanted to add, I don't think I had it in my report, but I did send you all, I believe, the email, letting you know about the two raise orders. We did hear back from Janet on Schofield Avenue, which is the house with the tree in it. Scott got a call from her today. She picked up her letter last week, so she's going to meet with him tomorrow to talk about that. We still haven't heard on the other one yet, but we're hoping to get those down, and maybe those are two more options for the fire department to train on.
Point of order, Mr. President, did we skip item 21 with Director Tautman?
You're right. I apologize. Jessica, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, I don't have nothing to add, there's a question.
Okay. Any questions for Jess? Next week, next week you'll have plenty.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for, questions for Jen? All right. Number 25, police.
Just a couple of updates from my written report. We have had a lot of burglaries in our jurisdiction the last three weeks. The ones in the report, we did make arrests for the Jaegers, who was burglarized numerous times. We also made arrests for the Wiggly, not Wiggly, Wendy's and Taco John's burglary. And then we did get more fast food burglaries after that arrest, so there's another burglar who's also targeting other jurisdictions like Rothschild and Marymount County. Just a couple staffing things. We're halfway through a hiring process. We have five that'll be taking a suitability test for the psychological portion, and those will be for the Dallas Police Commission. And we're halfway through the promotion process. Detective Chris Penning is getting promoted to sergeant effective September 23rd, so that detective process is open to fill his spot. And our clerical, our new hire clerical has taken another job somewhere else, so that spot is open again. So, with that opening, I'm going to be looking at some software technology that does transcriptions, and maybe that'll take up not necessarily that position, but another position. With this opening, I'll maybe be looking at some restructuring, if the transcription stuff can take over that spot since we can't keep it filled.
All right, any questions for Josh?
How are, I know that you mentioned the multiple, multiple times about staff being on workers' comp and everything. Have any of those returned from workers' comp, or how long, how much longer are we expecting, I guess, how much longer are we expecting them to be out on workers' comp?
We have two, the two ladies that were out on FOMA that had babies are back. Rob Dickerson, who was out on FOMA, that position is open and still in the middle. We have three that are out on injuries. One is an off-duty Achilles, who is now back on leave of absence. I don't know how long that's going to be, that's control. We got a workman's comp thumb injury, and that's taken forever. We're not sure if she's going to have to have surgery or not, but she's looking at another four to six weeks. And then our detective sergeant is on light duty with ACL.
Slim Pickens. All right. Any other questions for Chief Schultz? Public Works, Michael?
There's probably nothing much to add. I guess our new mechanic starts a week from today, and then we do have one employee, Randy Leacher, who was out for a while with an ACL issue. So, I guess it seems like we get one, we lose one.
Okay, questions for Michael? Technology, Nate?
I didn't have any major items, I guess, related to projects to report for this month. I'm just kind of catching up from our server migration, trying to get some seasonal items taken care of, so by next, next meeting I should have something more for you.
All right. Item number 28, acknowledged letter regarding 2020 plan, street reconstruction, utility work in the Weston School addition neighborhood. Some moves? Motion by Feeny. Second. Second by Sagami. On the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 29, August 2019, building permits. 移动的由 by Sagami. Second. Second by Feeny. On the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, three items, or two items. Number 31, approve vouchers, 50885 to 51121, and 90015. And item number 32, acknowledge appointment of James Falls to the Remont Metropolitan Sewerage District Board. When anybody like anything removed otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve items 31 and 32. Move to approve items 31 and 32? Motion by Sagami. Second. Second by Ermeling. On the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 35, ordinance number 19-011, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of 4.57 acres of land from single-family, SFL, single-family residential large lot to MF, multiple-family residential located northwest of the intersection of Hunt Street and Callan Avenue. Move to approve? Motion by Feeny. Second. Second by Sagami. On the question.
I have one, I guess, I, my comment to this is, when do we start protecting single-family residential areas? It seems this whole area here is, other than where they put the apartments, this is all single-family dwelling, and it just seems like every time somebody comes in and wants to put up an apartment, we change it around, and I guess I just have a real issue with our disregarding. There's no buffer, there's nothing. They're just going to flop these apartments.
All right, any other comments? I'll make one, having sat on the Plan Commission through this. These are, you know, I kind of look at things for not just zoning, but what kind of, what kind of buildings that we're putting in here. These are very upper end. I think the rent starts at 1450 and goes up from there. These are nice buildings, and basically just a variation on a single family, but for people who don't want to have to deal with the upkeep and the maintenance on it. And, you know, touching on Jen's, we have a lack of housing specifically in that category that's, that's very needed in the village, you know. It's adjacent to Fieldcrest, where we've had very few issues, if any. I know from the PD perspective, I don't know about the fire, but it seems to be a very quality type of neighborhood, and to me, that kind of fits in with, you know, beyond the zoning, I can believe it fits in with what it is. It's predominantly a single family, it's just not a single-family house. And it caters to a clientele that is really, that's looking for that in the village, so that's my comments. I know it was approved through Plan and Commission, and it did go through public hearing. Keith?
I guess just a couple of comments if I may follow up on that. I understand the concern of the neighborhood and whatnot, but the owners of this parcel previously had tried to market it on numerous occasions. I think they talked about zoning it commercial once upon a time, even. But the dilemma they always ran into on single-family development was that putting in the proper infrastructure, the infrastructure we require for that land to develop as a single-family subdivision, single-family home owner occupied kind of thing, just was never, you know, cash flow for anybody. You know, we don't jump in and participate in utility installations right off the bat. I mean, there are, there certainly are things to negotiate, but their ability to develop that land, I guess, or anybody's ability was, you know, it depends on the, you know, the cost of development being reasonable in terms of what's going to be done with it. So, I think we run into that, we run into that situation when we get into areas of the village that developed previously off of public sewer and water, on private systems, lots are larger, and then as we go forward in time, trying to resolve any of those future issues becomes a hard, becomes a hard thing to do, I think, affecting both the village and the lot owner. So, I think this is a case where, you know, the higher density makes much more sense for the infrastructure cost.
Thank you, Keith. Any other comments?
Well, it's just a good way to add more, more citizens to our village and ensure that we have more, more economic activity.
Yeah, I can continue.
All right, anything else on the question? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Okay. Motion passes 5 to 1. Item number 36, ordinance number 19-015, an ordinance to amend sections 94.4.02, parent 1, single-family detached residence, and 94.4.09, parent 2, detached accessory structure.
Okay, that's 36. I got to make sure I got the right, is that the metal roofing?
It is.
Okay. That's what I thought I had.
Did the Plan Commission hold the public hearing, Keith?
They did, and it passed through the Plan Commission unanimously. Move to approve? Motion by Sagami. Second. Second by Feeny. On the question.
Again, I guess I don't have a problem with this type of metal roofing in a commercial setting, but I do have an issue with it being residential. There is a difference in how it looks in the neighborhood. I know Mr. Maloney made the comment, well, we don't really, asphalt, yes we do, we don't allow rolled asphalt, and it does serve the same purpose as shingles, but it does not look very well. And that's kind of, if you see these bolts, I've looked at different ones, and I, like I said, I don't have a problem with it, where we would allow it in your, you know, commercial areas, they're higher roofs, they're not, but I don't think we should be doing it. I mean, there was a reason this was done to begin with, so.
I think, well, I guess I would disagree. I think the metal roofs have changed a lot over the course of time, to where sometimes the metal roof is a lot more expensive than putting in asphalt. And there's various degrees of asphalt shingles that you can get, or fiberglass asphalt, and some are good for, some you're going to have to redo in 10 years, and some will last for 50 years. And the other component to that is medical, metal roofs are recyclable, which is not the case for some of the other roofing materials, and it seems like the country's really pushing towards recycling. People are either going to, they're going to put the money into a quality roof, whether that's metal or, or a fiberglass shingle.
Well, I don't have a problem with the metal. It's the fact that you're allowing bolts to be exposed.
And we've had, and the Plan Commission has addressed that, too, and it's actually structurally more sound. Some of the, they said they've had issues with the, with the hidden fasteners being actually kind of working over time versus having the exposed fasteners. When you look, I drive up Nusco for that, and a lot of our business have these, and I think they look very professional. I don't have an issue with it, and I think people deserve a choice in what they want to put on their roofs.
I have a question about the process. When the public hearing was announced, was, was there letters that were sent out to the surrounding, surrounding neighbors, or were, how were they notified of this public hearing?
This is a general ordinance change, so it was placed in the paper, like it's required by statute, so it's not specific to a single property. It was brought up by a property owner in the ETZ area, but it's essentially, if you approve this, it's for the entire village and the ETZ area.
Okay. I just want a clarification on that. Thank you.
Is that put in paper two times?
Yes.
All right, anything else on the question?
Just another question, I guess. Is there, I know, so, is there other ways that we could do to try and get this, you know, if for future references, if there were changes to ordinances, is there other ways we could try to, I guess, market, and I wouldn't say market this, but communicate it to a wider, you know, to additional, additional group, I guess, I'm going to use it for the lack of better term, audience using social media as well, or, because I guess, my concern is that I'm worried of, you know, that the newspaper is only going to hit a certain amount of audience, it's not going to hit everybody as well. So, just a question, a suggestion as well.
Yeah, they, the state statutes require us to notice it in the paper of record, so that's the Daily Herald. It is antiquated. We also put it on our website, so people can, you know, essentially, it's on the front page, all the hearing notices. We don't go to the extent of putting it out on social media. Our, I guess, direction has been in the past from the board to kind of not utilize that for that, so I guess it depends on what your direction is. Times have changed. I would agree, the paper, I mean, it's required by state law, but nobody, nobody reads it, and we hear that a lot, and, you know, sometimes they charge quite a bit to put it in there. So, we tend to try to make those notices as small as we can, or we combine them together. But, you know, all our packets are available online, so everything you see, everyone else sees. So, it's just, some of it to me is that people really should probably pay more attention than they do to their community. But if you want us to put it on, on social media, we can do that. I don't know, I, we've done this in the past, like when we did the entire zoning code, we actually sent notification that it was happening, and we did have people in the room, but no one said anything. So, you know, and we invited people to meetings, we had focus groups. Zoning tends to not be a very interesting topic for people, I guess, until they try to do something.
The only reason why... The only reason why I'm also saying this, because I think, you know, I, you know, we, all, I think all of us as village board trustees, along with the village of Weston, tries to pride ourselves in being transparent, and although we always state, the state's saying that the citizens should be more interactive, we also need to make sure that we are as, you know, open as possible. And I definitely agree with the fact that, you know, that they should be aware of it, but I think it's also an excuse to say that they should also be aware of it as well. You know, I think we should just be as, you know, as transparent as possible. I'm not putting any blame on staffing or anything at all, I'm just, just a question, that's why I was asking, as to how we're currently giving out this, these public hearings.
We tend not to put it in the newsletter. We used to use it more often. It's out three, you know, every three months, so typically by the time it's out, it's over. So a lot of this stuff, it's not a good medium, but we've also had people will tell us that they don't read it there. So it's, it's really hard to determine who you're talking to and what they're looking at, and where they get their news from, I guess, too.
I think, you know, I know that's not on the agenda, so I probably won't go too much into it anymore, but maybe we should include that into probably our next agenda or something, to talk a little bit more about how we communicate these type of public hearings to the community.
Trustee Jeong, we can cover that in the human resources committee when we go through the social media policy?
And then I have one other question, and that's reading this, as I was at the planning committee meeting, it says that both the committee and commission recommended approval of the amendment, but requested staff add that only screws are allowed to be used, not nails. I thought it was bolts. I guess.
No.
No?
No, screws.
Screws?
Because nails will lift up screws holes down.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking something like that. Okay. I just, when I had that, I thought, gosh, I can't remember what. I knew they said not nails, but I thought it was bolts, but okay.
Okay. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes five to one. Item number thirty-seven, ordinance number nineteen dash zero one six, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of thirty-eight point six zero eight acres of land from AR cultural and residential to RR five rural residential, five acre, located north of River Road within the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction of the village of Weston.
I'll make a motion to approve draft ordinance nineteen dash zero sixteen, to rezone a parcel of land owned by Jason Mackey from AR to RR five, located in the ETZ of the village as requested by the applicant.
Motion by Armelain. Second by Feeny. On the question.
Is that the buyer beware with their driveway?
With the right of way issue, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. He was listening to that.
He was the one multiple times to get that.
He owns all the parcels right now, so he can't give himself an easement.
Yeah, but I think some, if something in the back of my mind, if somebody wants, they've got now a landlocked parcel?
It can happen if they don't follow, if they don't follow everything. I mean, we tell them. I've gotten in trouble in the past for even recommending it to certain people, but really that's something that the title company and their lawyer should be aware of during the sale, because they can't grant an easement to themselves, so they have to make sure that that's accounted for. Yeah. It was told to them during the hearing, because Mark Hall was, they've had that situation before.
That was driven home pretty solidly.
Yeah, pretty, they talked about it.
By the planning commission and the ETZ.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-eight, new business, appointment of Jessica Trautman, Director of Finance as village alternate, representative of the C W E D board.
Move to approve.
Motion by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Jeong. On the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-nine, twenty twenty Marathon County Responsible Units of Recycling Cooperative Waste Reduction, Reuse, and Recycling Education Program Agreement. Jen, are you sticking to that one?
That's just something that happens every year. It allows us to be eligible for a bonus in our recycling grant with the state.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jeong.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty, twenty to twenty to twenty twenty-two assessor contract.
So this was brought directly to the board because finance was supposed to be today, and that was, that meeting was delayed, so at this time, we went up for our request for proposals for the direction of the finance committee. We have three proposals. I did do a summary for you. Since we put the package together, we did do some additional information. Accurate appraisal, they were with the village of Cornwater, and they had, they are no longer with them. One of the concerns staff did have with the accurate was the reason that Cornwater is no longer with them. The communication with residents, and they just were not liked, I guess. Keith, do you have more to add to that?
Yeah, I guess trying to get feedback or some research on this, I guess is kind of a somewhat difficult endeavor, if you will. I know that as, this is no different than other professional services, when a company lists a reference, I think, you know, they're generally going, those people are going to give positive feedback, or give us positive feedback. So we did find some things that, you know, that raised some concerns among staff. We did not make a recommendation for the board here tonight, I guess, not knowing, you know, what the, what the board's view was gonna be on this, obviously accurate appraisals proposal for three years is something in order of about seventy-nine hundred dollar annual savings, I think, over what we would have with the contract to continue with Greg Schmidt. I think the main factor, I guess, is you have to weigh perhaps the risk, or the, you know, whatever may come with changing your service. We have a, we have a service and a provider that's been with the village and town, I guess, for twenty-nine years. It's a longstanding relationship. I guess we could certainly do more, try and do more background on whether or not you want to take action on this tonight, or certainly have some discussion on it. If you want some other research to be done, or even interviews with firms, people that we would be working with, would be one idea, I guess, if we wanted to, if that was your pleasure, I guess, but I guess it's your decision, I guess, how you want to handle that.
I guess I personally think it's very important to have good relations with the residents and get, if you get a call, feedback, whatever. I guess, I think Greg has done a fantastic job. I have never heard anybody complain about him. I really haven't, all the years that you've done this. I mean, nobody wants to see their assessment go upward. I mean, I'm not saying they aren't, you know, I wouldn't have a problem, I guess, at this point, I, what did you say, seventy-nine hundred dollar difference? I don't feel it's worth the risk of putting people on edge. I would have no problem at this time making a motion to approve this Schmidt decision.
I, I'd actually like to see this remanded to the finance committee for their input and recommendation on this.
Is that a motion?
I move to remand this item to the finance committee for their recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zagami. Anything else on the question?
Is there a timeframe that we need to be looking at here?
Well, the RFP said we'd make a decision tonight, so at this point, I will email them back and say it has been deferred. I personally would like to get this done, because it's part of our budget process. So if we can get something together, you're deferring it to the finance committee, is there any additional information you want, or you just want the finance committee to make the decision? I guess that's where I'm looking for more information.
My thought would be that the finance committee might have, well, just because of their, just because of their charge, they might be, or they could bring some background or some perspective that the board by itself doesn't have, and weigh the pros and cons, perhaps a little more judiciously than us simply, at least in my case, simply looking at the bottom line. So I think that they could do the pros and cons.
We can work with them. They've never handled this before. Three years ago, it was approved to just have Greg, and then three years before that, it went straight to the board.
Okay.
So the finance committee has not dealt with this, but it's something I can work with them and see what we can come up with.
Well, we have a motion and a second on it, so while we're still on the question now, we are gonna have a joint board and finance committee meeting next Monday to address budget issues. I realize you can't slide it prior to the meeting, but you'll still have probably some, you know, question marks on public safety as we move into that, so we can put it on the agenda, and that way the board and the finance committee can collectively address it.
That sounds good. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the question? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes five to one. Item number forty-one, five-year street sweeper lease with McQueen Equipment Group. Mike Lee, do you have any, do you want to add on that?
Unless anyone has any questions, our current sweeper lease agreement is up in May this coming year, so we've got proposals for a replacement sweeper, two, I guess, miles we tried, tested out, came back, I guess the, a recommendation is to lease a new replacement sweeper with McQueen for twenty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars a year, which is, what, ten thousand dollars less than what our current lease cost is for our unit.
Kind of a question, you had a comment. On a lease, is there any restrictions on the amount of use that it gets, or is it simply, I mean, is there a mileage restriction on it?
There's an hours use, there's an hours restriction, but we have not, we're not close to the hours on our unit over the last few years. I forget the numbers off the top of my head, but we have several hundred hours every year that we don't spend or use, which may be why they're giving us as good of a deal as they are for this new unit, knowing that maybe we're not as high users as other communities are in the area that they use.
And part of the reason for the question is, now the comment, I guess I would, I know we've had some just brief discussions with Keith, is it possible that for a piece of equipment like this, that we can work with our neighboring municipalities, and, you know, if we're having a lease, you know, depending on what the hours structure, there's a lot of duplication when you get to costs on public works. Because like fire departments, there's a, you know, it's pretty heavy cost when you're buying equipment, so I guess I would like to see if we can reach out and work a little more closely with some of our neighbors on, you know, public works things, especially when we get to, you know, specialized pieces of equipment that are only used on, you know, kind of a seasonal basis, so to speak.
Yeah, I guess the, the one hard part, I know we have talked about them in the past, I think it was Rothschilds who was looking at a street sweeper a few years ago, is as soon as the snow melts, everybody is trying to get out there sweeping their streets, so unless somehow we create multiple shifts, it's hard to, you know, everyone's trying to sweep their streets at the same time. So I, I guess that's one of the conflicts we've had in the past with this particular piece of equipment.
Well, yeah, I was just, I've been reading through and I see, I was gonna agree with you here that I'm glad you're not going to buy the old unit, because I can remember a few years back, we bought a unit, but it wasn't paid for and it fell apart. I mean, you know, we have, we were having to buy a new one when we leased it, but these units, I mean, they seem to go to the, they break down quite often and wear out very quickly, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I would definitely think that you would need to do another lease. I don't think we ever want to own one again.
Yeah.
I was driving behind the Schofield sweeper, and he wasn't doing the job, because it just broke down practically, and he didn't know it. He was going up and down, so I called Mark, I said, hey, he's just wasting his time, so those things happen.
Okay. Anything else on the question? I don't know, let's undertake a motion.
Motion to approve the lease.
Motion by Armelain.
Second.
Second by Zagami. On the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved. Item number forty-two, intergovernmental agreement with Town of Weston for repaving Kramer Lane.
Motion to approve the intergovernment agreement with the Town of Weston for repaving Kramer Lane from Trotser to use one.
Motion by, and we have a motion by Armelain.
Second.
Second by Jeong. On the question.
I guess, is there any hope at all for the roundabout?
Yeah, we can still look at this. This would be about a half mile south of there.
Yeah, I just, every time I go through that area, I just think, this just is, you know, looking for accident, looking for a place to happen. I mean, I know you can't go that fast, but boy, there's just, you look and you look, and when you're coming down Gooseman and through that way and then hitting that, it's, you look down the road and you go, okay, there's nothing coming now, and then you, you know, you try to get out there before something turns off of one of the other streets, you know, it's just, and if that area down there ever developed, that would be a nightmare. Really would. And I know there's, I think I sent you some, this from, on that, there is some money out there, and I don't know, it'd be nice if we could, as a town and village, maybe get a step up from somebody.
Director Wodolski or Administrator Donner, could you refresh my memory as to what the issue was with the roundabout in the town?
The town, the majority of the town board members did not want a roundabout, period, under any circumstances.
Okay.
That's it. We, the village was in favor of it. I agree with you, Barb, I think a roundabout would be appropriate there, but we're partnering with the town on this, and I think we made a very, we had grand money in place, and we actually even offered to pay for a little more of the roundabout, our percentage of it, and the town board members still said no.
Still said no?
Yep.
Is it all in there in Town of Weston?
Seventy-five percent is, I think, or right around that point.
We were looked at doing the, doing a combined grant, and we were gonna pay fifty percent of the roundabout we agreed to, and the town board members, the majority of the town board members still said no. I know Chairman Olson was trying to, he was in favor of this, but he didn't get the votes at the town board, so. So I don't know if, it's changed a whole lot a few months, but we can certainly bring it up again and make the overture, but.
I mean, I know we can, but, yeah, I think it's so important, I really would, it's really, you know.
It's in the town, it has to have their blessing.
Yes, you gotta get their approval to do it, but it just, it just, it's far short sighted.
Frustrating. All right. We have a motion, a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Remarks from trustees. Barb?
I think I talked about that.
Keith?
Nope.
Shane?
Nope.
Thank you.
John?
I will be in Tosen next Monday.
All right.
Can't wait to see you.
Will you have a nameplate on?
Yes, sure.
I just want to address the young man in the back. Congratulations on starting your citizenship in the community merit badge, and if you need help with your Eagle project, the community does help, and scouting is a fantastic organization, so stay involved.
And I gotta agree with Nate for change here. As a couple Eagle scouts, we appreciate, appreciate what you're doing, and we know, we've been down that road, so we know exactly what you're going through. But it's a great, it's a great organization, I'm sure you've had a lot of fun, right? Awesome. Okay, the one remark I have is, at the Safer Fire Board meeting this month, the fire committee, they approved Dave Phelps to be appointed to the fire commission, so maybe on the next agenda, we can just have that as an acknowledgement, and needed somebody from one of the communities that is served by Safer, so Dave Phelps lives in the Town of Weston, and he was appointed to be, replace the vacant fire commission position, so.
It's always a hard one to find.
All right, future items, next meeting, September twenty-third, that's next week, Monday, six P M., and that's gonna be a joint board of trustees and finance committee, it'll be our first, kind of go around with the overall budget. And we have a local government seminar, Monday, September thirtieth, at five P M. Is that here?
No. No, if you want to register for that seminar, just contact me, email me, and I can get you registered. I think it would be a, I think it would be a real good seminar, especially for maybe Nate, since he's newer to the board, but if you're interested, let me know.
If I can make it, I will. I'll look at my calendar.
All right, have a clear the agenda, look for a.
I'll, I guess, along the same lines, there is a local government, or a levywoman's workshop that's gonna be held every month.
Wednesday at nine.
Wednesday, so I don't know, I think the board was, sent a notification about that, I don't know if we registered for that.
I registered for it, I'll be there.
Yeah, I am too, so.
Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Jeong.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.